Okay Commissioners, the first item in the Preservation Department calendar today is an application for a Commission binding report. This is located at Pearl Street, at York Street, within the Dumbo Historic District. It's docket number 168169, block 7777, lot 77. It's -- this is a street grid that was laid out circa 1830, and the application is to create a pedestrian island.
Good morning Commissioners, Harley Bond and the Preservation Staff. This is an application to construct a raised pedestrian island within the street bed and intersection of Pearl and York Streets within the Dumbo Historic District to address pedestrian safety concerns. And Dan Wagner, who is with the Department of Transportation, will run you through the presentation.
Hello, my name is Dan Wagner. I'm with New York City Department of Transportation. I am the project manager for this project. Also today here we have Neil Gagliardi from Urban Design and Zeph Parmenter, who is with the Brooklyn Borough Commissioner's Office. This project is located at the edge of the Dumbo Historic District. It is at the intersection of York and Pearl Street, and part of it -- part of the proposal is inside the boundaries and part of it is outside. This project is also nearby the existing Dumbo Capital Project from DOT. This is a whole street and sidewalk reconstruction that has already been approved, and we are going to be following similar treatments and language found in that proposal. Previously, when we presented this project to the community, we included four locations, two of which are outside the Historic District and one of which is -- one other one is inside the Historic District. That is York -- I'm sorry, it is Pearl and Front Street. This proposal has been folded into the Dumbo Capital Project Phase III that DOT will be reviewing with you at a later date, so that is being removed from this proposal at this time. The existing conditions of York and Pearl Street include asphalt with Belgium blocks underlayer and, you know, between York and basically the bridge piers. And on York Street, it is exposed Belgium blocks, and north of the bridge piers, it's exposed Belgium blocks. It's been paved over. There's also some striping on the asphalt there. These are some existing conditions. We've got a few of them to look at. What you can see is the actual asphalt that has covered up the Belgium blocks underneath. This is looking east. There's, you know, this is the location of where we're going to be talking about, and you have Belgium blocks underneath. Some of it's being exposed through wear and tear. Vehicles drive this way, so they're chopping up the asphalt, but over here it's still completely covered because no vehicles drive there. This is looking west down York Street. Again, there's Belgium blocks with some asphalt patching on York Street, but not on the triangle area that we're going to talk about. And again, a similar -- similar -- this is looking northeast. Our proposal today is for pedestrian safety improvements in the area. This is for accessibility and safety. We are going -- we're proposing to build a pedestrian concrete island, essentially where that striping is today. And adjacent to it is some painted truffles -- painted epoxy gravel space. And that would be for pedestrian access as one walks north and south along Pearl Street. And to cross York Street, which is the exposed Belgium blocks, we're including some granite paver accessible crossings that is with the ADA -- that meets ADA requirements. This is a treatment that is also found elsewhere in Dumbo. To give you a better idea of where we're talking about and what we're proposing to build, this highlighted area would be where the concrete triangle was located. It's entirely on top of asphalt. This is an example of a granite curb with tinsed concrete. This is the materials that we're going to use. It's typically found in Historic Districts, and we're going to mirror that here. This is a photo of a Dumbo crosswalk that I think is on Water/Washington, but these are the granite pavers with the Belgium blocks. This is the treatment that we're going to propose to cross York Street, and this is also part of the approved Dumbo Capital Project, that, you know, it's the same treatment as they're using there. Some examples of epoxy gravel space found throughout New York City, Grand Army Plaza and nearby on Old Fulton in Brooklyn. Both of these are -- it's just -- it's a pedestrian space, no vehicles drive in it, and that would go on top of the asphalt. So this is the same photo, and that is the location of our rendering of the concrete island, concrete triangle with the crosswalk. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes?
Are we leaving the Belgium block in place so that in the future it could be re-exposed, perhaps?
Unfortunately, we cannot construct our concrete island. We're going to remove the Belgium blocks. We're going to preserve them, and we're going to reuse them in the adjacent capital projects in Dumbo.
And why not leave it as Belgium block?
We are construction -- we need to excavate to create the foundation for the concrete.
No, I'm asking why the concrete?
Oh, why the concrete?
As opposed to the Belgium block?
Sorry. Because the ADA requirements for accessibility, you know, the cobble -- the Belgium blocks are not an accessible surface for ADA purposes. And...
Okay. Other questions? Right, we'll take testimony. Doreen Gallo.
I can never say her last name, I'm so sorry, and Commissioners. I am Doreen Gallo and here to testify on behalf of the Dumbo Neighborhood Alliance to reject the proposal initiated by the bid to create a pedestrian island. In the Dumbo Historic District designation report, Andrew Dolcart writes, "The Dumbo Historic District is enhanced by its distinctive industrial streetscapes. Many of the streets and sidewalks retain their original granite Belgium block paving as well as a network of railings running along the streets and in some cases extending into individual buildings laid out by the J Street connecting railroad. The Manhattan Bridge, which soars over the area, provides a dramatic backdrop for the neighborhood's industrial architecture. The Anchorage and the piers of the bridge, with their boldly detailed arches spanning the streets and sidewalks, are a major presence and strongly contribute to the district's sense of place." This proposal -- this is no longer Andrew. "This proposal is a continuation of the ruination of Dumbo's unique streetscapes by the partnership of the bid with the Department of Transportation, the DDC, with the cooperation of LPC at staff level since Dumbo's Historic District designation in December 2007. I sat through DOT's proposal last month that Community Boards choose Transportation Committee, initiated once again by the developers' bid. The DOT characterizes cobble peeking through asphalt. This is an action that DOT created. The examples shown are DOT's own HICA laws not being enforced. If the Department of Transportation were not housed under formerly open space areas down under Manhattan Bridge overpass, there'd be plenty of room for pedestrian plazas without destroying Dumbo's Historic District. This initiative is an example of fragmented governance with a lack of accountability. This is one of the worst places for the pedestrian plaza, and narrowing the street will not make it safer. York Street is one way for cars driving east to west. Pearl Street is one way north to south. There is ample visibility." The Department of Transportation and the bid did not reach out to the Dumbo Neighborhood Alliance. I personally led the campaign for the Dumbo Industrial District being placed on the state national registers and the Dumbo Historic District becoming New York City's 90th Historic District. I've lived in Dumbo since 1980 and know under every paved over street is Belgium block. The whole neighborhood was intact until 1985 when DOT randomly started paving over the intersection at Anchorage, Water, and Pearl Streets. This is a complete disregard for preservation, and Dumbo has not been protected by designation. Reject this proposal and restore and preserve Dumbo." I just have a couple of pictures to show you the whole entirety of it. This is the area, and, you know, I mean, I'm going to pass these around, but this was paved over for their Capital One project to put their, you know, house their employees. Their trailer was parked there for that. You know, this is a space that's useful parking, that could be used for pedestrian plaza. This is all, you know, I mean, I'm going to pass these around because it's impossible, but it's really, I mean, you have to not approve this or take us out of, you know, we shouldn't be in Historic District. It's not making it safer and...
You have to speak into the microphone, Doreen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but it's not making it safer, and the other initiatives that they say are not part of the designation, York Street was 100% Belgium block. They had a one-block rezoning. They did not put the Belgium block in place. I'm sorry, I'm so upset about it because they're destroying the neighborhood.
All right. Barbara Zay.
Barbara Zay of the Historic Districts Council. One of the character-defining features of the Dumbo Historic District is its industrial past reflected in such details as its early utilitarian paving. Pouring more concrete into this intersection will not provide a significant or appealing pedestrian amenity, but would be a major gesture toward homogenizing the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Martin.
Hi, my name is Chris Martin. I'm with the Dumbo Improvement District. Thank you for letting me take the time to speak to you today. While Dumbo streets were originally designed for major industrial use, the reality today is that Dumbo needs to be friendlier to pedestrian traffic. There are many major commercial and residential real estate projects in the pipeline like Dumbo Heights and the Empire Stores, which will generate more pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic in the neighborhood in the coming years. According to MTA's most recent numbers, overall ridership at the nearby York Street and High Street stations have increased by 14 and 11% respectively over the last year, and current census information shows that the residential population in Dumbo has tripled in the last 10 years. These increases highlight the necessity for better pedestrian safety, which is a paramount priority for our neighborhood. The project DOT presents today is a direct response to community concerns about pedestrian flow and traffic calming. We also understand the need to maintain the historic integrity of Dumbo's Belgium blocks, so we also support DOT's plans to restore and reuse the Belgium blocks from this area in future Dumbo Capital projects. We are thrilled by DOT's responsiveness and commitment to ensuring pedestrian safety in Dumbo, and this project can be implemented in a quick, short timeframe and will deliver immediate and targeted improvements to the neighborhood. The Dumbo bid fully supports DOT's actions presented today, and we ask that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Bell-Gough.
Krista Bell-Gough for the Society for the Architecture of the City. Designations by the Landmarks Commission are declarations of public policy, and ideally every branch of government would honor determinations of its historic significance made in designation reports. Dumbo is renowned for its historic pavements. Designated in 2007, the intervening years have seen some pavement restoration, but not nearly enough. Under the Manhattan Bridge, the area that gave the district its name, the original Belgium blocks are still defaced with unsightly patches of asphalt, and now DOT is asking to remove underlying Belgium blocks for a new triangular concrete island. The presentation offered to the public gave no dimensions, but the size of the triangle appears inadequate for any kind of public amenity, and no evidence was presented of any urgent need to redirect traffic in a somewhat out-of-the-way location like this. And may I add that in Manhattan, when this type of project was being considered for Astor Place, we were presented with detailed surveys of how many accidents there had been over a 10-year period. They took counts of how many people were walking. We see nothing of this here, and I find that unusual given the representation that there's a public safety issue here. I mean, what has happened that has been so terrible? If a traffic island is really needed at all, it should be reconsidered and redesigned in materials that do not spoil the appearance of an important view within the Historic District while the entire surrounding roadbed is restored. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, I think it'd be helpful if DOT, if you'd like to respond to the testimony that you just heard.
To respond to the last one first, the pedestrian volumes -- we have the pedestrian volumes, we have the vehicular volumes for this intersection. We didn't present them because we were just trying to make it short and concise. The number of pedestrians who cross York Street north and south in the morning peak vehicular time is approximately 120 pedestrians crossing in this crosswalk. I guess I can find a map. This crosswalk had about 120. This one was slightly -- was significantly less because there's no pedestrian amenity for someone to cross to. We think it would balance out with this proposal. The number of vehicles coming in this direction were approximately -- I don't remember this number exactly, but it was in the 100 to 200 range, I would say approximately 150 vehicles, most of whom are turning left or -- well, they're all either turning left or going straight. And that creates enough conflict for pedestrians and -- between pedestrians and vehicles for us to be able to possibly make this a -- an uncontrolled crosswalk. That is not formal yet, but it was enough for us to be, okay, this is a place we need to work. The actual safety data for crashes and collisions and fatalities, no fatalities and very low numbers, that's why we didn't bring them up. We usually bring them up when they're significantly higher in a place that we need to really focus. And regarding some of the earlier comments, the -- for pedestrians to walk north-south along Pearl Street, exposing them in a way like this man is walking here, this is an unsafe condition that the city is trying to take care of throughout the city. When we see places where this is an unused space, this is called -- we call this internally we call this channelization. When we see channelization, we ask the questions, why is there channelization here? This is channelized, that means no vehicles are supposed to drive here, and therefore why is it roadbed? And we're trying to reappropriate the roadbed to maximize for all users. Clearly, no vehicles using this, so why shouldn't pedestrians be able to use this? That's sort of the overarching policy that we go forward with. Anything else?
All right, questions? Yes, Roberta?
And so that area, that's the only area you're talking about paving over is the triangular area?
Well, it's --
No.
Give or take, it's where this line is and then east. So these parked cars would be moved over here so they could park here instead, and then we could have from here east could be all pedestrian space.
So you're saying that you're leaving the granite blocks in the other areas, and you're just taking it out in that area?
No, except for where they're putting the epoxy. Let him answer.
This epoxy gravel is -- is the -- yeah, all of the Belgium blocks would remain where the epoxy gravel is painted onto the roadbed. That is for drainage purposes, namely because the water slopes -- it slopes down here, and this clearly slopes down, so the natural flow of water's going this way. If we build that out, we'd create ponding up here, so there's some cobble -- Belgium blocks that will stay here, and then this is where the drainage is not like that.
And what happens in the triangle, just as a -- so you're creating a...
We're creating a pedestrian space that the Business Improvis District is going to program for us, for however, you know, whatever they go forward with.
It's a 1,200 square foot area that's being excavated for just the construction of the triangle.
Okay, Kim, and then Fred. You had a question?
Yes, I'm not familiar with the area, but where -- do you have a bigger area map? Because where are all of these people on their way to? That it's, you know, being paved and you're saying the bid is going to program it, but it just looks like a big dead area where a lot of garbage is going to be, you know, kind of like the alleys on Broadway.
There's new parks, there's a new park up along the river, and the subway, subways are down in this area, so it is a through movement for pedestrians going to recreate.
All right, Fred.
Yeah, what is the -- I call it pea gravel, I guess it's stabilized gravel. I forgot what you're calling it here. What's the derivation of that, and why is it an appropriate material in this district? I know it was used recently at Fulton Street nearby, but it seems odd there as well. I mean, why is it appropriate at Dumbo to use that material? I don't think of that material in Dumbo.
Well, we've used the epoxy gravel.
Oh, you're talking about this?
Yeah, the epoxy gravel. I mean, this is a typical treatment. We have used at Grand Army Plaza and other Historic Districts and scenic areas. It's our applied treatment on whatever is existing there, and that's what we're using.
Well, I mean, that's sort of my point. You know, at Grand Army Plaza, the entrance to, you know, one of the city's major, most important parks where there's a lot of gravel, that's understandable, but I don't -- I just don't see it as a material that's endemic to what makes the historic streetscape of Dumbo.
Well, I can add to that, too. Right now, it's just asphalt anyway, so we're not going to be -- oh, I'm sorry, Zephany Warmer, I'm with DOT. We're not, you know, we're not going to be taking up the Belgium block, it's already paved. We're not going to be taking up the Belgium block, we're actually just going to be putting the epoxy over the existing asphalt. So again, it is our typical treatment for areas like this, but it's also a rough surface that people can walk on, and it's also ADA compliant, so when it's wet, for example, people will be slipping all over.
And is this already used in Dumbo as part of your Capital Project, or is this a material that you're introducing for the first time?
No, it wouldn't, because it would be reconstructed.
No.
I believe it's -- I'm Neil Gagliardi. I believe we use it at the entrance of the park in a plaza area there, so it is in adjacent areas of the district. Are you suggesting that there are other treatments? I mean, is it the color, is it the...
Asking the appropriateness of the material, right?
Yes. It's inappropriate material.
Typically throughout the city, we've tried to create the recognition for drivers to understand that when they see this color, it's either a gravel like this or a paint that's called truffle paint, and it's a very similar color. When they see that, they're supposed to -- drivers are supposed to know that this is a pedestrian space, this is not vehicular access. And that's, you know, part of the reason we want to use it, is so that when drivers who are driving throughout your city are familiar and they'll see it and they'll know. It should be blocked, it'll be blocked as well, but just to re -- yeah, it'll be blocked physically through a number of options that we haven't developed, but it's going to tell drivers that this is where you're not supposed to drive.
The drivers want to have access, though, right? After you finish your improvements?
Yes, but, you know, drivers are drivers, they can still get anywhere.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, I recognize that there's a need to do something over here. I've been here. It is, I think, very -- it's not reconciled, and I think it does feel unsafe regardless of what the counts are, because it's not defined. But I think that I agree with some of my Commissioners about asking the question regarding the material, and particularly since maybe it's -- I'm just responding to the color and less so to the actual texture, but it seems to have no place in this district, and I'm just curious whether you've thought about other colors or textures that could fit in better but still meet your needs.
So I think it's a good point. I mean, we have used truffle paint in different colors that are more muted, that we could look into to see its viability. I mean, I think it is what you said, to identify that it is a pedestrian area, but it is rather bright on that level, but then we could look into some other finishes that might be more muted for the context.
Okay, and the other point I just want -- or question I have is, I know that you answered it, but if you could just elaborate a little more the idea of retaining the cobble and covering it instead of removing the cobble? You said you'd need to put foundations? You have to excavate because it's to make it plain?
Yes, our unit who does the actual building of the sidewalks, they tell us that they need to be able to go down approximately 18 inches to build, and when they do so, they would have to excavate the actual Belgium blocks themselves. And once they do that, we ask them to retain them and reuse them in the Dumbo neighborhood and the actual other projects, and they said that would be fine.
One of the issues is that the surface isn't uneven, and to make the triangle's uneven, you actually, like with the sidewalk, you have to go down, you have to excavate what's underneath, you have to lay a layer of sand, and then you have to make sure it's all level, and then you can put in the concrete and you'll have a level island. So it's inevitable that you have to go down and actually dig out to securely or to secure the actual triangle and make it level.
Can I ask, to what -- I understand the issue of leveling, for the sake of safety, but -- and to what extent is there consideration of sort of green infrastructure or green street in these kind of areas that are being sort of moved into more pedestrian and less vehicular usage?
Generally speaking, we're very open to that, and we are working -- we have a whole green infrastructure unit that we are working with to identify locations. This location, unfortunately, is underneath the bridge, so it doesn't get very much rainwater. It gets runoff, runoff.
Right.
And it gets plenty of runoff, but it doesn't actually get a lot, so they weren't very interested. They said they wanted to focus their resources on areas where they could get more bang for their buck.
Yeah, green streets are done primarily in priority areas, watershed zones, for example. This isn't actually in this area, it's not considered by DEP or DOT a priority area.
And yet, still, there is runoff, so this would be an area where it would be -- it would benefit something to absorb that water, right?
It's not something we can rule out. I mean, we can always investigate whether this would be a good place for a green street, definitely.
Would the lack of sun worry about, you know, yeah, it'd be low planting, that whole stuff.
I just have one more question or concern. I think we all remember when SoHo streets were ripped up and put back with cobble, which I think have worked out pretty well, pretty well, but certainly the crosswalks were a disaster in granite. Is there -- you must have learned from that, and what you're proposing here is not that. I just want to be sure.
Now, the previous treatment that was all cracked up before we went back into there, I mean, this is the treatment that we have rested on that is very successful in Dumbo and in SoHo and other crosswalks.
And it's holding up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're pretty happy with this treatment. I mean, it really does solve the issues that SoHo had encountered for years.
Mike.
Yeah, I think I have a much more -- I agree with the discussion about the inappropriate materials. I have a much more fundamental problem with this approach, which is essentially creating a pedestrian passageway where there is not one. And I agree with the testimony that this was, in fact, an industrial area, a cobblestone street industrial area. That's part of the reason why it was designated. And the more mollification that we perform there, the less it -- the closer it is from the departure from that industrial area. It seems to me that if you want to redirect, there's always going to be some knucklehead walking across a triangle like that. If you want to redirect pedestrian traffic, you redirect it to the shortest place across York Street, and that way it allows you to retain the Belgium block. If you want to raise that triangle up, fine, raise the triangle up. It doesn't necessarily have to be a pedestrian playground.
Well, you know, it's important to us to keep these Belgium blocks, and, you know, we recognize the significance of the district. We recognize its industrial past, but we also have to deal with the reality that this is the residential aspect of the district. of this neighborhood has increased dramatically over the last, even, say, five years, and we do have Brooklyn Bridge Park on the other side of this, which is creating a lot of pedestrian volume, increased pedestrian volume.
And, and that's wonderful. Part of the reason that people moved to that area and you have more, more pedestrians is the fact that it was designated the district that it is.
No, no, it's-
And so, the more you depart from that-
But we have to make it safe. That's our obligation, is to make it safe, so.
But, but you've got a low accident rate there, nearly nonexistent, apparently, so.
All right, well, um, are there, are there, yes, Roberta?
I'm sort of following up on, on that comment. I, I wondered why the, um, the triangular space, if it has to be redone, if it has to be a des, a pedestrian go-to spot, uh, why it could not be done of Belgian block? I mean, I know that, you know, you're looking at something that's smoother and whatever, but since, to me, the, the Belgian block is an important, um, characteristic of the district, it seems that it would make more sense to incorporate that into what it is you're trying to do, rather than taking it all out.
If, if we could meet our, our obligations under ADA by doing that, we would, but unfortunately, we can't meet our legal obligation, uh, to, by doing that.
But that's because you're trying to create a, a destination. If it were just, if it were sometimes not a spot where you were expecting pedestrians to go.
Well, if we weren't expecting pedestrians, we probably wouldn't even be building that.
The, um, sorry, give it one more.
Yes, yes.
I want to mention that it's not necessarily a destination like other plazas. It is to improve crossings and the anticipation, anticipation of the watchtower development. We also have an active yard there, and I, I think the chairman mentioned navigating through the area, so there are times when the volumes are very high, and there's other activities, so that's really the same. It's not really our plaza program going in there, and that, and that's not, not really the aim of this effort.
Okay, just one more comment, and, um, the, certainly the crosswalks that you're proposing, the ones that you just had a picture of, the one that is the replacement of the failed Soho, so, yeah, that one. Certainly that meets ADA accessibility. Maybe that's a, maybe that's an idea for a new pa, a new paving plan.
To deploy this instead of the tinted concrete in the triangle?
And in the other areas, too. Better.
I think that'd be better. Is this something that, uh, you've explored, or?
Um, I, I mean, we, I know, there's a, there's a cost issue that, you know-
There's a significant cost issue.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is actually, we're doing this in-house because we are not contracting out as a capital project, which means we have a lesser budget to work with, in this case.
But, but, so what you were proposing now is just to, where the asphalt is, and retaining the cobbles. If you were to propose this, you would actually have to take out the cobbles, right, to, to, to lay this?
So just to be clear, the, the 1,200 square foot triangle, wherever that is, it needs to be excav, excavated, and the cob, existing cobbles, whatever is underneath, will be, uh, removed and stored and employed in the other streetscape nearby. So those will be removed in that, in that footprint.
Okay, and that's, okay, so that's-
Everything else will remain? Yeah.
So the cotton, just, so I understand, there, it seems to be, there are two issues. One is the gray triangle, that's where you're removing the cobbles, correct? And you're putting, and that surface is going to be?
That's the, uh, approved, uh, historic district tinted concrete-
Okay.
With granite curb around, which is-
Fine, okay. And then you have the, the yellow or ochre color, uh, crossing. That is where you're keeping the cobbles?
Yes.
Okay, but you're using a material on top of that, which is what you used in Grand Army Plaza, which, uh, we have some concerns about. Okay.
I mean, we can always investigate a different type of treatment for that.
You know, there is truffle paint that we have deployed, more mu, as I said, more muted colors in different districts, you know, but, but serve the same purpose. The epoxy does provide a little, uh, uh, resol, resolution of surface if it's uneven, the, um-
It's a little nicer. The one thing we want to make sure we don't do is something as a street color, or, you know, asphalt color. We don't, we were trying to get away from that vehicular clarity.
But that has a curb along it, does it, doesn't it?
Yes.
The existing curb will remain, and then there will be the curb on the side of the tri, the triangle in granite.
Okay, other comment? Yes, any other comment?
I just, I support the direction of Commissioner Bland's question, which is, you know, not to, um, forego this, the, the blocks themselves, the, the old cobbles, which, and that would mean, if you need to make it more even, or for the sake of safety, then working with these larger granite pavers, as well as the blocks, both in the area of the triangle, as well as in the area that you're proposing to epoxy. Because this epoxy material just has nothing to do with anything, and I, I, for, my sense is that it was, um, you know, the first time we started, started to see it was for temporary reasons, it seemed to me.
Yes.
And I think that we've now gone to it as a permanent, you know, solution. I don't understand that.
It's still intended to be temporary, it's still intended to be, uh, locations where if funding were to come along, the areas that have been used as epoxy or truffle paint, um, those would be already designed to be built as a full, uh, ra, you know, pedestrian surface of some sort, but no matter what the material is. Uh, and so ideally, if somebody came up with many millions of dollars, we would, we would build that, yes.
But we're talking about, so the area where it's, uh, you know, not a compromise, but a different way of approaching this, is that certain areas are going to be treated, the cobbles are not going to be removed, they'll be treated the way that's been done in the historic district. Um, but the other portion, it seems, which is smaller than the 1,200 square feet that you're talking about, uh, I don't know what the price differential is, but to extend the treatment, which is what Fred was talking about over there, it's limited-
The epoxy area?
Yes, and the epoxy-
The epoxy area is about 1,400, something square feet. So it's actually a little bit bigger than the triangle, which is about 1,200.
Um, you know, just-
Okay, and is there some, uh, just, uh, some mag, magic number to the width? Is it, because, is the width defined by what? I mean, uh, what's dividing these two spaces?
Okay, how about it? Yeah. Okay, so originally, I, I can address that. Originally, when we were going through-
Why isn't, for example, why isn't it all one thing?
Good question, yeah.
If there's no crosswalks, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When we were going through iterations of how we wanted to design this to meet the community's request, um, one of the issues was ex, uh, vehicular accessibility through here, and to do that, who, at the time, we were thinking a parking lane, uh, along this existing curb, uh, that's eight feet wide, and then, uh, one moving lane that's 10 feet wide, that was pretty much the smallest distance we could get. Later, when we talked to the bid, and they said that they were interested in programming the space, uh, and they would maintain the space, we were able to close it off. So the 18 feet could be reduced, uh, significantly, if that was the, uh, committee's request, and, uh, but what is still required, though, is a drainage path that goes down here, and if you get too narrow, then it gets really dirty and harder to clean, so there would still be some amount of space. Uh, but again, you know, the, the bid has offered to maintain the space, so it's pretty flexible in what we want.
Well, I'm wondering if there's a way to change the dimension, which would mean that the area that you would put these cobblestones would be less?
Here-
That, you know, that, the treatment that Commissioner Bland had suggested.
Here's even another idea. I mean, I'm sorry to get so involved in this, I'm surprised, but I do live nearby, and I know the area very well. Um, you know, in many parts of the city, when new experiments of closing lanes to traffic and opening them to pedestrians, particularly in their last administration, particularly in Times Square, it was understood as an experiment. It sounds to me as if this is also an experiment. This is not a hugely populated area yet, so the whole idea is an experiment. At Times Square, they painted very cheaply, and saw and understood, hey, it worked, and then they went in with a permanent solution. It seems to me as if you're kind of betwixt and between, you know, with this epoxy, which you know is not going to last long, why not just paint it and, and, and try it for a few years, and see if it's going to work as a, as a programmed space, and then come back to us with a permanent solution?
Yeah. Absolutely, I mean, yeah, the epoxy, so to speak, is not set in stone. I mean, it's just a, uh, it's our usual treatment, we've, you know, we figured this would be acceptable here, but we can look at other, other options.
Diana?
Yeah, since we're sort of into comments, almost really, uh, as we're going around, uh, you know, I, I too find it, I'm, you know, unhappy with the idea that we're losing what's a really, you know, characteristic feature, and trying to figure out how to deal with the safety issue, but the other thing is, um, I'm hearing that there would be other measures, uh, taken to prevent vehicle traffic in this area, maybe, if I understood correctly, so I'd like to see the context of that, you know, too, as well. Okay, so what else is being done? Like, if there, if vehicles aren't able to readily get into the area, then maybe it's, doesn't have to be such a defined, you know, pedestrian space, uh, or if it is, you know, maybe there's another alternative here. It, it's just, you know, I feel like we don't have the whole picture a bit, I guess, also.
Well, I mean, our treatments for pedestrian spaces tend not to be, especially in this type of situation, tend not to be very complicated. I mean, we can put some sort of, I don't know if you're familiar with the little flexible delineators and ballards, we could, but-
That's what I was kind of thinking.
Yeah, I mean, we could put, we do have granite blocks that we can put there, but one of the things is those are a bit difficult to remove, and this is actually, since this is close to the bridge, uh, Bridges Unit needs to get underneath it and do maintenance, so we don't want to block it completely.
So you need your own access to the issue, yeah.
Yeah, we need access to repair the bridge, so it would be better to have something like flexible delineators that we use in other areas like this. We can do that, yeah.
So, um, going back to this, are you, when you say, we can do that, what are, what are you suggesting? That you'd re-look at this and come back to us?
Well, the, I don't think, I, delineators really, I don't know if you want us to come back with that, they're literally just the little flexible ballards you stick in the ground. I mean, we can put them at, at both ends, that's, that's kind of all they are. They're not, um, they're like, I think there's only one, like-
Yeah, they're on this side, and they require two bolts, and that's it. It's not, it's not a permanent thing.
Yeah, they're easily removable, so.
They're what divide the lanes and the tunnels?
Uh, those, depending on which tunnel you're in, but some of them are a little more heavy-duty, some of them are-
Someone similar, but heavier, okay.
These are not, these are more, these aren't heavy-duty to really prevent anybody from, you know, smashing through. These are really to, to demarcate it as a pedestrian space.
Tell people you're not supposed to drive in, yeah. Unless you're really-
And you don't want to plant a tree, let's say, in the middle of it?
Under the bridge.
I don't know.
Well, we have to dig on the Belgian blocks, do that, so.
Mm-hmm. I don't think, right.
No, but I'm, I'm good with that.
I mean, we could put, I guess we could put planters, you know, on top of the, you know, within it, yeah.
No.
I don't even feel that that's Dumbo either.
Yeah, I, I think, I think this other temporary solution is better.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Why don't they work with staff?
I think that's fine.
So do they want to return or not?
Are we thinking about the epoxy gravel area, we'll look at different materials and, and treatments there, that is more in view of consistency? Is that, is that one of the takeaways?
No epoxy.
Yeah.
Oh, we can, truffle paint is-
Right, find the, the, the least-
Right, so we could, we can look at, at truffle, truffle paint alternatives that might be more appropriate in color, finish, I mean, like Times Square, that was, you know, that was the same type of-
Yeah, we're not wanting to be-
I think-
This is a temporary application.
And it's an acknowledged temporary, so we should see, to see what's going to work.
Yes.
But we were sort of saying that the epoxy on the gravel kind of thing was more appropriate to a plaza area, or an area next to a park, or something else, and it, yes, we did not think this was, that type of surfacing would be normally what we would see as a general thing. I think that's-
Yes, um, I think-
Just want to note as a caveat, uh, that your Lower East Side bid, uh, surface area where you use it, where you use the, uh, paint, is hard to maintain. I think that that area accumulates a lot of grime, a lot of dirt, and the, um, it's not as, you know, especially with the runoff, it's, um, it, it becomes a messy area afterwards, so be careful what you wish for.
Which is another reason we're trying to prefer the epoxy, frankly, but, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, that's a good point, and a more muted treatment than that one, where it's not so ob, obvious, what, you know, when it, where, when there's wear and tear, and it might be more consistent with the district anyway, so.
That's true.
Okay, um, so what are we suggesting here?
Come back.
Come back.
Come back, okay.
With the treatment, with the, uh, 1,400 square feet?
Yes.
What that-
And-
I would also say, just look at the situation, the, the Belgian block in the triangular area, and see if there's any way to keep it, even if they're doing whatever they're doing next to it and covering it, uh, at least it gives, uh, some future generations a chance to create it back if they want, but I just think that they should look at that, if there's a possibility of doing some, or, that's just-
Right, so, I, I, if you can respond to that issue as well, which is, right, if you're going to paint it and put some sort of border around and make it more temporary, then do you need to have this demarcation that you've shown here as well?
You mean the raised triangle?
Yeah, the raised portion.
So, so there's a question about the raised triangle?
Right, because that's the raised, uh, triangle is where you're removing the, the cobbles.
So, you've looked at some options previously of, of, uh, uh, an ad-grade treatment, is that?
Uh, you know, generally speaking, we prefer to do the, when we can, we prefer to not do the ad-grade treatment with the paint, because it's less safe.
And it'll be pretty much the same as this. All we would be doing is just putting stripes on the ground to delineate it as a, as a non-vehicular space, so, um, this is to make it more, uh, obviously pedestrian, you know, put in an island.
Right, but it seems that the island is, is, um, is more permanent, right? You're putting foundations there, you're removing the cobblestones, and the idea of having this as a test, why would you want to do that? And why don't you test it as you've done in Times Square, and see if this is the best orientation?